I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Defoe?
Here.
Ms. Selesny?
Here.
Mr. Friedman? Mr. Friedman? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Weigum? Mr. Weigum?
He said here.
Thank you. Madam, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I also see Mr. Friedman, so we'll let the record reflect that Mr. Friedman is also in attendance.
Thank you.
And let's move to communications, please.
Yes, we do have, we'd like to announce that if you would like call in during this to make public comment, you can dial 1-415-655-0001. Use the access code 2348-007-7878.
Okay, thank you. So let's move into our public hearings. The way that this board conducts business is the city will call each case using the case number and then reading a brief description of the case. We will then ask the appellant to speak up and state your name and address for the record. We ask you to explain to the board what you're asking for and why. And then we will turn it back over to the city. They'll read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add anything else at the time. Then we'll get a staff recommendation. From there, we'll move to public comment and then turn it over to the board to discuss and make a decision. So with that, will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. This is regarding zoning board of appeals case number 21-27. The City of Southfield Zoning Board of Appeals behold a public hearing regarding the appellant, Anisha Newsome Wilson, owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. A waiver to install a six-foot fence in the front yard. The property is located on the north side of Brookside Drive between Plum Hollow Street and Hunter's Lane at 22410 Brookside Drive, Sidwell Parcel Number 2428426004, zoned RE, single-family residential. This appeal is to sections 5.73-1 subsection C1A, Article 4, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant present?
Yes, I am.
Hi there. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Anisha Newsome Wilson, 22410 Brookside Drive, Union, Southfield, Michigan.
Great, thank you. Perfect. Could you explain to us what you're asking for and why you're asking for it, please?
I'm asking if I could get a privacy center on the whole property so we can have a little more privacy. Our backyard isn't really suitable for the kids to play in and we want them to be able to play in the front yard and be able to do what it is that, you know, kids like to do, which is have fun and be crazy without, you know, having to have a nuisance of the neighbor being watched.
Okay. We will turn it back over to the city for the findings of fact, please.
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact, case 21-27, the appellant, Anisha Newsome Wilson, owner is requesting the following waivers from the board to erect a fence in the front yard. The property is located on the north side of Brookside Drive between Plum Hollow Street, Hunter's Lane, at 22410 Brookside Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2428426004, zoned RE, single-family residential. The properties to the south across Brookside, east and west are zoned RE, single-family residential and are developed with the single-family dwellings and the supervisor's plat of Branch Brooks Estates subdivision. The north property, to the north, the property is zoned OS, which is office services, and is undeveloped with mostly wooded wetlands and the River Rouge. This property to the north is owned by Straight Hospital, Fronting Loser Road. Field inspections of the surrounding properties reveal limited fencing as the properties are very large in scale. Some properties include the appellant and sites abutting have older non-coated chain link fencing. The appellant's parcel contains a driveway facing Brookside and, as does the home's front entrance. Extensive shrubs and trees exist along the proposed fence line along Brookside Street frontage. The parcel is approximately 610 feet deep with approximately 200 feet of the rear portion occupied by wooded wetlands and the Rouge River floodplain, which is currently undeveloped. The dwelling is 2,253 square feet, one-story frame structure with brick facade. It has 528 square foot attached garage and was built in 1954 prior to the incorporation of the city or zoning ordinances. The owner is proposing to install a six-foot white vinyl privacy fence along the east and west property lines to the north, which is the rear yard, approximately 75 feet from the rear of the house. And to the south, the fence would be set back approximately 35 feet from the road behind the mature landscaping, mostly eating eastern red cedar trees. The fence ordinance does not allow privacy fence in the front yard. The appellant is seeking a waiver of 320 feet beyond the front of the house. 320 feet proposed, zero feet permitted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Does Ms. Wilson, do you agree with those facts? Or is there anything else you'd like to add to what was just stated?
I think that really explains the yard really well. Oh, I don't think so, not at this moment.
Okay, no problem. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
The staff recommendation is to deny a waiver for 320 feet beyond the front of the house and approve a variance for the variance, for the fence to be approximately 160 feet beyond the front of the house in line with the front of the home to the east. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed fence would be non-conforming and the neighbors to the east and to the west would not be in compliance with the ordinance as the proposed fence would extend beyond the front of both neighboring houses. The proposed fence is not in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would have the adverse and/or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. That the proposed fence is not consistent with the spirit and intent of the fence ordinance. To approve a variance for the fence to approximately 160 feet beyond the front of the house in line with the front of the house to the east with the following conditions. That the fence must comply with all other fence requirements, including all property lines to be staked by a licensed surveyor prior to installation. That the fence in the front yard be no more than four feet in height and must not be sight obscuring or opaque. That the appellant secure all required permits and inspections from the building department. This recommendation is based on the following. The proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. And that the proposed fence is consistent with the spirit and intent of the fence ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point before we turn it over to public comment?
Okay, so I think I understood what he said to the left side of me, but what about the right side of me? As they have a fence that goes all the way down to the end of, you know, our property line.
So Wayne, do you want to explain, and this is not the decision because it still has, the board is who will discuss it. But based on the staff recommendation, can you respond to her question, please?
Yes, ma'am. So the fence is there is non-conforming and it's prior to the, as I mentioned in my findings of fact, is prior to the ordinance and is considered grandfathered or non-conforming legal use. For you to put up a new fence is what we're here to talk about. What the neighbors have doesn't really apply. And you're proposing an opaque six-foot high fence and that's a, not an opaque fence and it's only four feet high. And it doesn't, I believe it goes all the way out to the road. But again, it's non-conforming legal fence.
Thank you. Okay. So let's open it up to public comment. Ms. Selesny, as the secretary, do you want to read the letters that we received? Ms. Selesny, are you on mute?
We just lost Ms. Selesny.
Oh, okay. Is it? I guess I can read them, can I?
Yeah. Do you want me to let you know when she calls back in?
Uh, yeah. Yes, please.
Okay.
So we received a couple of public comments by email, it looks like. The first one is from Kia Glass. It was received on October 25th. Says, "Good morning." Address, 22290 Brookside Drive. "I am opposed to a six-foot fence going around the front of the property next door. It would change to look of the neighborhood. At this time, no property has a fence that extends beyond the front of the house. Also, all the fences in the neighborhood are cedar or natural wood. I am opposed to a white PVC vinyl fence. Regards, Kia Glass." A second letter we received is from Suzanne Gowardy on October 28th. It says, "Hi Brianna, just left you a message regarding my position on the legal notice for 22410 Brookside Drive. My address, I'm the resident at 22260 Brookside Drive. My home is next door to the Glass property. As a resident of Southfield for 33 years, I'm opposed to a six-foot fence, white vinyl PVC around the property at 22410 Brookside. Such a fence would dramatically change the appearance of the natural beauty of the neighborhood. A cedar fence only between 22410 and the last house that's next to 22410 would be acceptable, but not white PVC. All homes that have fences on Brookside or Plum Hollow are cedar or wood. So again, my position is no white or any color vinyl PVC fence around above said property. Only a cedar fence is somewhat acceptable between 22410 and the last home on Brookside. The last home lost their natural fence approximately five weeks ago because the residents at the address had the natural barrier cut down. Not sure of the last house address on Brookside. It's located between 22410 and the Sutton Place Apartment Complex. Best regards, Suzanne." And then, yeah, those are the two I have. So Ms., Brianna, do we have anybody on the public comment line?
Jody, we have a bunch of callers.
Okay.
It looks like about six. So I'm going to start with 248200 and you're now unmuted.
Are you here to speak to public comment on this case?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm Kia Glass. I'm the neighbor.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. When, when the recommendation or what they were talking about, about the fence, does that include a, does that include that there's a fence going perpendicular or in front of the house? Or are you talking about fencing on the side of the houses?
Wayne, do you want to respond to the question?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Recommendation, please?
So the recommend, the proposal is to put a fence on all four sides of the property, including the front of the house.
Okay. Well, like I said in my letter, my neighbor, I'm not for a fence going on the front of the house. It just changes the look of the neighborhood. The neighborhood's really nice and you can see the lawns and everything and the deer. And that would kind of really change the look of it, the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you calling. All right, Brianna, next line?
The next line is 248388.
Hi there. Are you here to speak to public comment on this case?
Yes, I am.
Hey there.
I'm also
Just state your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Eleanor Glass. And I'm also the neighbor to the party who wants to put up the fence. I'm also concerned about the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I've lived in Southfield for over 30 years and I know that the ordinance is had, if you wanted to put a fence, it has to be at the easement of your home, but not going all the way out to the road or the way that the proposed fence wants to go up. I agree that it would affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood, all the wildlife that's going, you know, that's present. It also would, I think, decrease the value of the properties in the area because there's no other homes that will look, look like that. And if the council, if that particular fence is allowed to go up, then other people would want to put up fences, I'm sure. But that's not the reason why I moved to this particular neighborhood, to have an erection like that. So I'm hoping that the city would understand that I'm concerned about our, my property value and the aesthetics of the uniformity of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brianna, next line?
The next line is 734751.
Hi there, good evening. Are you here to speak to public comment on this case?
This is Darren. I'm actually the contractor.
Oh, okay, thank you. Brianna, you want to go to the next line?
Oh, Ms. Selesny's back. I'm going to unmute her. That's the next line. Hi, Ms. Selesny.
Hi, I got disconnected somehow. I don't know how much you heard. I read both letters into the record, but I doubt whether you heard them.
No problem. I read them as well.
Oh, okay, fine.
Thank you. We're just going through public comment.
I'm going to listen to the rest of the public comments before I have anything to say on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next line is going to be 248730.
Hi there, good evening.
Good, hi, good evening. My name is Yul Jonathan and no, I'm not here to comment on this particular matter.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Brandon, is there anybody else?
The next one is, it starts with 312404.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name is, good evening. My name is Ian Bolton. I'm attorney for Ms. Newsome and Mr. Bolton. I thought Ms. Newsome did a great job explaining why she wants the fence. And I thought the recommendation was, was reasonable and fair and probably addresses Ms. Newsome's concern. So I didn't, I don't have any further comment unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brianna, do we have anybody else?
One more caller and that starts with 248327.
Hi there, good evening. Are you here to speak to public comment on this case?
Yes.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
Deborah Payne.
Okay, and go ahead with your comments, Ms. Payne.
Okay, I live across the street on Brookside Drive. I've just been in the neighborhood for three years and I didn't buy a house to look out my kitchen window and front window to see a six-foot fence blocking my view. So I, I wish you would understand that no one needs a six-foot fence around their front yard. The backyard is good enough for kids or they already have a little fence around their yard. So I don't, I don't get it. So I'm just making my comment that I don't want my property to be able to go down.
Okay, thank you very much. Brianna, is that it? Or do you have anybody else?
That was the last one.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we will close public comment and we will turn it over to the board. Ms. Selesny?
Yes, this is a very difficult case because this house is extremely unusual and the way it's situated among its neighbors is very unusual. And I do understand the fact that there's not much space in the backyard for children to play or to put children's play structures and things like that in the back because of the Rouge River and the topography. On the other hand, I also understand that having a big white fence all the way around the property along the front yard and along the side yard is certainly not tenable and certainly an eyesore. But it's not true that nobody has fences. I see some fences, but they're, they're the the chain leak kind of see-through with shrubberies around them, so they're not so offensive. I thought that the city had a good suggestion as a compromise and I would go along with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weigum, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Do you have any comments on this case?
Yes, I do. I would go along with Ms. Selesny. There's no way that you're going to have a fence all the way around the property. We didn't, you didn't mention it in here, but it shows it on the picture. And I'm not sure on the back side, you could put a fence down into the floodplain. Now Wayne, would you comment on that, please? Madam Chair, if I may address?
Yes, please.
Mr. Weigum? Right now, they're proposing a fence in the backyard of 75 feet deep by 119 feet. That's bigger than most people's whole lots. So that's, that's a pretty good area for them to put a fence around. And that's just in the rear yard. Okay, and on the west side, the adjacent house, which is vacant and may have been abandoned, sits way up near the road. Is the proposal, or is the suggestion, Wayne, that they put that fence all the way up to the front part of that house also? No, to the house to the east, which would be the Not the east, the west. I'm sorry. The one that's closest, the farthest off the road, the one that's all the way up by the road. It would not, it couldn't go up that far because then the house on the other side would not be in compliance. The fence would go beyond the front of their house. And the ordinance says that a fence cannot go, cannot be in the front yard. Yeah, but one, one sits back and one sits forward. So I understand the proposal being on the east side to go as far as the front yard of the neighbors. But on the west side, there's nothing said. The fence would terminate at the front yard of the house to the east and it would cross their, the subject property at that point. And then return back to the back of the property on the west side. So it wouldn't go any farther than that. It wouldn't be any farther into the front. It would be approximately 160 feet from the house. The front, the front fence paralleling the road. And it would go straight across the front yard of the subject property. And, and they would have then a gate? Is that what you're suggesting? That it goes across there to the other side and there'd be a gate? They're proposing a gate across the driveway to access vehicles and things like that, which is also a concern that that gate may hinder the access by emergency services. So, so we're saying, basically what you're saying is that the fence will come as far as the, or you're suggesting as far as the front yard of the house on the east and on the west to the same position? Correct. Is that correct? Yeah, the fence paralleling the road going across the subject property would be at the front corner of the house to the east and it would go straight across and meet the fence on, to the house to the west.
So if you're looking at the image that's on the screen right now, it would almost like be right at the V of the circle?
Correct. Right. That front fence that's all the way up by the road would be moved back to the front corner of the house to the east. And including the side fences, there would be no, no fence in that front, beyond that house to the east.
Beyond their circle drive. Their circle drive would be enclosed in the fence and that's about it.
Okay, I understand that. And I certainly agree with the neighbors that said no vinyl there. That would stick out like a sore thumb. And I would go along and say that it needs to be, you're going to put it up, you can put up a wooden, a wooden fence four feet high and I could go along with that. Was one of the things. Madam Chair, if I may clarify?
Yes, please.
The recommendation was that it be non-opaque or visually blocking. So it would have to be an open fence similar to a picket fence or a wrought iron fence or something that doesn't block the view. Excellent, excellent. I would absolutely, I would absolutely go along with that. I wanted to ask the homeowner on the side of the house, on the west side of the house, there seems to be a barnyard. And in that, in that area, there are geese and ducks and chickens and turkey. And I understand there might even be a sheep back there. Is, are they in proper, there's not a zone, not a zoning, but a is that okay to do, I guess, my question? Do you know, Wayne? I would have to look it up in the zoning ordinance. There is a regulation about having animals and what type of animals and how they're kept. But we're not here to address that, or at least I'm not, but I can. If somebody wants to make that recommendation to the building department or to code enforcement, we can go out and have a look at it. Yeah, I don't have a problem. As long as it's okay with the code enforcement. I understand someone, but third, third person said that if you have a huge lot like they have, I guess they can do that. But, but that's something that maybe the building department may look into. I'm not going to put anything like that in the, I wouldn't advise putting it in the recommendation, though.
Okay, is that all, Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, I understand that the property owners need for some, some enclosure on the sides in the, in the front. You know, I certainly agree with the city that, that putting it all the way to the front of the house is inappropriate, not in, not in keeping with the fence ordinance. You know, and if we're going to give them something in the front yard, I agree it should be opaque on the front there. Otherwise, you know, so I'd go along with the city's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I agree with the city's recommendation. I feel like it's reasonable to allow them to run the fence to the front of the neighbor's front yard and across. I see what their problem is in the rear yard. I don't think the fence is going to be harmful to the other neighbors' view, view lines of deer and stuff like that with the fence only coming out to that point. So I would be for that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilson, do you have any, do you agree to that kind of limited front yard? Are you accept, is that acceptable to you? As a negotiation? She's still with us. I wonder if she's muted. Wayne, was there any conversations with the homeowner or their attorney in advance of this?
Not with the attorney, but I have spoke with the contractor and the homeowner, both. They were, as an alternative, they recommended to me a four-foot fence versus a six-foot fence as an alternative, but in the same location as the six-foot fence is being proposed.
Uh, after a conversation with the building official, Mark Pilot, he, he's the one that recommended the, uh, compromise.
Okay. Okay, um, so, I mean, just so it's, I guess, clear to, um, the public who called and, and had concerns about the, you know, six-foot fence and the, you know, what would generally be called a privacy fence. Uh, what is being, you know, proposed and sounds like it has support from the board would be a fence that, that would not be what you would think of as a, a privacy fence or a PVC fence. It would be, um, you know, something that you would be able to see through, whether it's chain length, whether it's, you know, wrought iron or picket or something like that, that actually has gaps in it. Um, and then four feet instead of six feet. So that's, that's basically, um, you know, quite a compromise and, uh, from, kind of, I guess where, where the, uh, original request was. So, um, let's see, um, uh, Mr. Friedman, would you make a motion for us?
Sure. Um, the appellant, Anisha Newsome-Wilson, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board to, to erect a fence in the front yard. The property is located in the north side of Brookside Drive between Plum Hollow Street and Hunter's Lane at two, two, four, one, zero, Brookside Drive, Sidwell Parcel, two, four, two, eight, four, two, six, zero, zero, four, Zoned RE Single Family Residential. Um, I, uh, I move that we, um, the, uh, s- sorry, the, the waiver is requested for three hundred and twenty feet beyond the front of the house. Um, uh, three hundred and twenty feet proposed, zero feet permitted. Um, I move that we, uh, we adopt staff's recommendation and approve a waiver for a hundred and sixty feet beyond the front of the house with the following conditions. That the fence, uh, comply with all other fence requirements and include property lines to be staked out by a licensed surveyor and private is, is prior to installation, and that the fence in the front yard be no more than four feet foot in height and must not be sight obscuring or opaque, and that the, the appellant secure all required permits and inspection for the building department. And this recommendation is based on the following, that, that this, uh, uh, modified, uh, proposal, proposed fences in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon the adjacent or surrounding property. And that this new, uh, uh, adjusted proposal is consistent with the spirit and intent of the fence ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
Minute.
Thank you.
I wanna add, I wanna add something to that. Uh, this is last, um, uh, one of the things that we, we wanna say that the fence in the front be no more than four feet in height and must not be sight obscuring or opaque.
Believe I mentioned that.
Mm-hmm, it was right. Yeah.
Sorry if you did.
No problem. That's okay. No, it is important. Yep, it's very important. Okay, uh, will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. DeFoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny? Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Okay, so that means the motion carries five, two, zero, and, uh, the, um, I guess amended proposal, uh, is approved. So please, uh, your contractor should work with the building department to secure the proper permits, and the program can be, uh, kind of kicked off. So, uh, good luck and thank you. Um, and will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. The case twenty-one dash twenty-eight, the appellant, Great Day Improvement, representing Debbie, Debbie Abduar Rashid, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board, a waiver of rear yard setback, twenty-five feet required, ten feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Thornwood Court between Berkshire Drive and Evergreen Road at two, zero, two, nine, zero, Thornwood Court. Sidwell Parcel, two, four, one, five, four, seven, nine, zero, one, two, Zoned R two, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to section five point six five, article five, chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Is the appellant here?
As I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, yes, my name is Michael Schember, and I'm representing Debbie. She couldn't make it tonight. Uh, the address in question is twenty-two ninety Thornwood Court, Southfield, Michigan, four, eight, zero, seven, six.
Okay, thank you. Can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the, our client currently has a deck on the back of the house. Um, and basically what we're looking to do is, just due to the age of the deck, basically take it down, build a new deck in the exact same imprint of the existing, and then on top of that new deck, put a three-season glass room. So the room will be mostly see-through.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for the case two, one, dash, two, eight. The appellant, Michael Schember of Great Day Improvements, representing the owner Debbie Abduar Rashid, is requesting the following from the board, ten feet of minimum rear yard setback, building setback, twenty-five feet required, ten feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Thornwood Court between Berkshire Drive and Evergreen Road at two, zero, two, nine, zero, Thornwood Court. Sidwell Parcel, two, four, one, five, four, seven, nine, zero, one, two, Zoned R two Residential. This appeal is to section five point one, nine, three, article twenty-two, chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The property to the north, south, east, and west are, are Zoned R two, Single Family Residential, and developed with single-family dwellings in the Evergreen Trail sub. Field inspections of the surrounding area reveal that there are mostly two-story dwellings with a few one-story dwellings mixed in. The exteriors are made of brick and various siding materials. Dwelling in the, in this, dwellings in this area have two-car attached garage. The subject dwelling meets all the setbacks and lot coverage requirements as per section five point one, nine, three, article twenty-two, chapter forty-five. The majority of the neighboring properties have similar conforming setbacks. The subject home is a one-story wood-framed, single-family dwelling with a brick exterior and was built in nineteen sixty-one. It's fourteen hundred and ninety-six square feet in area. The lot coverage of surrounding properties ranges from sixteen to twenty percent, with most ranging in the high teens. The lot coverage for the subject property with the proposed addition would be eighteen point four, six percent. The appellant is proposing a two hundred and ten square foot, three-season sunroom.
Thank you. Um, did, uh, Mr. Schumber, do you agree with those, um, facts, or do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, I do agree. Everything he stated is true and correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Uh, staff recommendation is to approve a waiver for ten feet of minimum rear yard setback, building setback, twenty-five feet required, ten feet proposed with the following conditions, that the appellant secure the required permits from the City of Southfield Building Department. This recommendation is based on the following, due to the uni- unique shape of the property on which the addition is proposed, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties and undue hardship upon the owner or the, of the property. The proposed addition is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. That the proposed addition is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, of the regulations which apply to the zoning district.
Great, thank you. Um, so let's, um, turn it over to public comment. Brianna, do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, the first number starts with two, four, eight, two, hundred.
Hi there. Good evening. Are you here to speak to public comment on this case?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Next line?
Okay. The next line is, it starts with two, four, eight, three, eight, eight.
Hi there. Good evening. Are you here to speak to public comment?
I have no comment on this case.
Okay, thank you very much. Next line?
The next line is two, four, eight, seven, three, zero.
Hello, good evening. I didn't have any public comment for the case, but this is the case that I was calling. I was interested in the decision, um, because I live in that area, and I was considering uh, requesting, uh, um, a zoning waiver as well.
Okay, thank you.
My purpose of information, though. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
That was all, Jody.
Okay, sounds good. Um, okay, so we will turn it over to the board. Uh, Mr. Rogers?
Uh, yeah, um, I don't think that something modest like this, and it's basically replacing the deck footprint, um, and that the house is in a cul-de-sac. Um, it looks like it's designed very, very nicely, and, um, as long as they get the required permits, um, I don't have a problem with it at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Uh, Weigum?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, no, I have, I have no problem with this at all. Um, one of the things that I consistently don't like is the, uh, one of the recommendations is the last one that it said it's in the spirit and ten of the zoning ordinance. I don't see what that has anything to do with it, but that's just my opinion. As far as the, uh, putting this up, uh, I have no problem at all, and it looks like a, a nice structure.
Great, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, I have no issues, uh, with this waiver. Uh, you know, the lot's designed in a way that, uh, they, they, you know, be kind of silly to, 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 uh, keep them to the, to the setback. Um, and so I would go along with the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Selesny?
I agree with the findings of the, of the, of the city and their recommendation. I think it's gonna be a lovely project for, um, outcome for the family.
Great, thank you. Um, I also think, you know, kind of based on lot size and the fact that, you know, the deck was there and uh, they're really not changing, you know, too much about their footprint, that it is, uh, an acceptable request. So, um, let's see. Mr. Rogers, would you make a motion for us?
Uh, yes. One second. In regards to case, zoning board case twenty-one dash twenty-eight, the appellant, Michael Schember of Great Day Improvements, representing the owner Debbie Abduar Rashid, is requesting the following from the board, ten foot, ten feet of minimum rear yard building setback, twenty-five feet required, ten feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Thornwood Court between Berkshire Drive and Evergreen Road at two, zero, two, nine, zero, Thornwood Court. Sidwell Parcel, twenty-four, fifteen, four, seven, nine, zero, one, two, Zoned R two Residential. This appeal is to section five point one, nine, three, article twenty-two, chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. Uh, I make a motion to approve a waiver for ten feet of the minimum rear yard building setback, twenty-five feet required, ten feet proposed. Um, based on the following condition, that the appellant secures the required permits from the City of Southfield's Building Department. I make a motion based on the following, uh, due to the unique shape of the property on which the addition is proposed and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties or undue hardship upon the owner of the property. Also, the proposed addition is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. And that the proposed addition is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. DeFoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny? Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries five, two, zero. Um, you are, uh, ready to work with the building department to secure your permits and move your project forward. So, thank you. Uh, that concludes our public hearing. Uh, looks like we have a set of minutes from September fourteenth. Uh, does anybody have any changes or corrections?
Looks okay to me. I move that we accept them.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. DeFoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny? Ms. Selesny? Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Okay, that motion, oh, try one more time. Okay, that motion. That motion carries four to zero, uh, since it seems we've lost Ms. Selesny temporarily. Uh, we have a meeting, a special meeting, looks like on November sixteenth, for a fence case. Um, is there any other information?
Well, it's, it's, uh, I can say it's a fence. Uh, they're looking for a setback requirement on a side yard fence on a corner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody have any miscellaneous?
I would like to commend Brianna on, on a tremendous job of shuffling through those phone numbers. I, I, I was, uh, when I heard there was a whole bunch, I, I didn't think that would go as well as it did.
Nice job, Brianna.
Freeman, thank you.
All right, uh, if, uh, no one has anything else, uh, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everyone.